Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. We're going to have our moderator, Mrs. Janine Reed, take over, and she will be guiding our discussion today. We're so happy you joined us.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is a privilege for us to be with you this afternoon. But before we begin anything, let's just bow our heads for a word of prayer. Dr. Willis, would you give us a word of prayer this afternoon?
Sure. Let's bow our heads and close our eyes. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your blessed Sabbath day. We thank you, Lord, for just giving us an opportunity to come and to share about Adventist Christian education. We thank you for each panel that's represented. We thank you for those that are watching or who will be watching. We thank you in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. This afternoon, we want to spend some time with you to talk about the importance of Adventist Christian education. But before we begin, we want to make sure that all of our panelists will introduce themselves and tell what they bring to the table for Greater Atlanta Adventist Academy and Berean Christian Junior Academy. All right, I'll start with myself. My name is Janine Palmer Reed. I've been at GAAA for, this is the beginning of my 29th year. I know it sounds strange to stay at one school, but I love the school. I bleed maroon and gold. I am privileged to be the chaplain and the religious instructor at Greater Atlanta Adventist Academy. I'm going to ask each of our panelists, would you introduce yourselves and tell what you bring to the table and what you're going to do next school year?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. My name is Joe Jordan. I am a product of Christian education, not only Christian education, Adventist education. So I have a love for God and a love for Christ, especially with children in school. I was also a math teacher for about 11 years in the public school system, so I can tell you the difference between an Adventist Christian education and also a public school education. What I bring to the table is a program called STOMP. And the program, it's an acronym for Students Trained for Opportunities in Multimedia and Photography. This is a passion of mine that I want to bring to the school this year.
Thank you very much.
And I'm Dr. Denise Shaver. I am the new principal for GAAA. And I also am a product of Adventist Christian education, elementary school through tertiary. So I went, all of my education has been through the church. I've worked in public schools briefly, but most of my grounded, rooting and grounding has been in the church. And I hope to just promote continuous excellence in our Adventist educational school system.
My name is John Damon, and I'm the new athletic director for GAA, GAAA. And what I bring to the table is a lot of experience in working with athletics and building bridges within the community. That's something I did for about 20 years in South Central California. I am also a product of Christian and Adventist education. I'm a Oakwood graduate. I'm very, very proud of that. And so I understand what that brings. And also, my children are products of Christian-Adventist education. My son and, my daughter, my son, sorry, has a degree from Oakwood as well.
All right, thank you. Last but not least, all right.
Yes, you say the best for last.
All right, all right.
So my name is Sheila Willis, Dr. Sheila Willis, and I am the guidance counselor and registrar. And I bring to the table sound clinical advice, sound clinical judgment for our students, our staff, and I love numbers, data numbers. So a lot of people say they do Canny Crunch, and I do Data Crunch with our numbers. So I am here as a guidance counselor to help with college preparation, to help with getting all the students on track from freshman year to senior year. So the guidance counselor and registrar. Thank you.
All right. I want to just add that our principal of the Berean Junior Academy, Mrs. Marcia Davis, was supposed to be with us, but she is out promoting our schools at another event that conflicted, so that's why she's not here. And our early learning director is under the weather, so please pray for her. We are here representing the compound, not just GAAA, but Adventist education, and particularly the ones on our campus. So we want to encourage you to support us all.
All right. Now, I've heard all of you discuss, especially on this side of the panel, say that you are all a product of Adventist Christian education. So am I, okay? And my son did 19 years of Adventist education. And I want to say this from the beginning, it does not cost, it pays. It does not cost, it pays. And God, if you have enough faith, he will help you to do what you need to do if you do. And that's what we are here. I put my child where my mouth is, and that's what we're going to promote today. Now, I want to just say this. Everybody sees all of these toys and things around where I am seated. And that's because, that's the type of teacher I am. I like for you to see a sermon than to hear one any day. So my first question is to the panelists, is to ask you, what is this? What is this?
It looks like a wheelchair.
It's a wheelchair. What do you use a wheelchair for?
To push someone around who can't walk fully.
Go on, now be politically correct. What type of person would sit in this wheelchair?
Possibly handicapped.
A possibly handicapped. That's my first question to all of you. Does Christian education handicap a student? Do you get a quality education if you come and get a Christian education? Anybody can answer.
I definitely believe that it does not. What happens is it enhances you in so many other areas to be able to talk to your counselors, be able to talk to people about Christ and stuff. And the other thing is that, I'm just using examples of my son. My son had a group of friends, and they all got to the time where they're getting ready to go from eighth grade to high school. And his friends felt that they needed to go to another institution at that time in order to go to some of the schools they wanted to go to. My son went to the academy. And as it came out, they all got scholarships. When they came out, he had scholarships to Howard and, I can't think of the school, but also Fisk University, Tuskegee, which ended up being his initial choice. And then he transferred over to Oakwood. And I'm saying, he graduated in four, he changed his major from Tuskegee when he went to Oakwood and still got out in four years based on what he had learned. And what he said to me, what he had learned was the principles of how to do. So a lot of times, people get caught up with the fact that something's not cutting edge all the time. But cutting edge isn't important if you know how to do things. If you know how to work out problems, if you have the patience and the work ethic, then you'll be able to get through everything else. And that's one of the things that I know that we teach at our schools. And it's one of the things I definitely push when it comes to athletics. The most important part of it is the discipline and the work ethic, because that's what you're going to take over into everything else you do.
Now, Coach, I'm going to put you on the spot right now, because you're also going to coach the basketball teams, right? Is that correct? Or assist?
I will assist.
You will assist, okay. Let me just ask this outright. As a former baller, are you going to be a cussing coach or you going to be a praying coach? I just need to know.
In Jesus. No, I am very animated.
Okay.
No, there's no, but I am very animated and passionate. That's one of the reasons that it allows, and I do that in my students.
But in the Lord.
But in the Lord.
In the Lord, that's what I'm talking about.
If anyone that knows, people will come sometimes, they say, "I can be as entertaining as the game."
Okay, well, you're going to make me come out to the games then. All right, all right now. Anybody else want to answer that question? Can I get a quality education if I go, you know, to a church school? Or is it all just about Jesus all day long? Can I get, you know, whether prepare me to be a doctor, a lawyer, or even just to be a decent human being? What is the quality part of Christian education?
Well, as many of you may know, the church has been tracking the benefits of Christian education. And I know several years ago, and they've done a reiteration of it, of the Genesis research program and the findings. And they found that Adventist education produces students who perform better, right across the board. Right across the board, and they graduate from college. And if I said the name of that research program wrong, please correct me, because sometimes I will, research is something I do a lot of. But I believe that's the name of it, and they've shown that. But I recently was researching just Christian education in general outside of the Adventist system. And the findings were the same, that the Christian education period produces better students. And that wasn't just Adventist, right across the board. And that was, I believe, it was Harvard that did that study. And they found that. So definitely, it produces more. And I just want to piggyback on what Coach Damon was saying, that the foundational skills, right, and the soft skills, you're going to learn that at a Christian school even more. They found that we speak, kids who go to Christian schools speak better. Why? Because they get pushed up in front of the church at a young age, and they have to pray in front of people. So they articulate better, they communicate better. And so overall, you're just going to get a better education experience, I think. And I want to encourage you all. We have people manning the Zoom and YouTube. So if you have any questions or comments, please put it in the chat. And we are, I'm watching my phone to see if you want to reach out to us. So we want to hear from you.
Okay, all right. Willis, I see you putting, go on, go on and talk about the goodness of the Lord and the importance of Adventist education. Go on to talk about it.
The importance of Adventist education. I want to go back to your question. Does Christian, Adventist Christian education handicap you? And I want to say emphatically, no. No, it does not. It actually propels you. We have electives that prepare our students in every area. If they want to go into medicine, we have Intro to EMS. That's the core foundations of medical terminology. If they want to be a speaker or a lawyer, we have oratorical skills. And so we have various things that will propel them, along with what Dr. Shaver, our principal, said, with the soft skills. And people talk about character development. We can say character development and Christ-centered, and that just elevates it to another level, Christ-centered.
All right. Now, let me move my wheelchair out of the way. Next one. Now, we're the knights, and I want to just show one of my knights. My colleague, Mr. Campbell, gave me a beautiful knight. But I found this knight, and it's something unique about this knight. And I'm going to ask my panelists, what's wrong with this knight? What's wrong with the knight?
Doesn't have a sword.
Doesn't have a sword. And you know what? People say all the time that if I can put my child in public school as long as they're going to Sabbath school, and I got them going to prayer meeting, and they're part of the pathfinders and everything, but what's missing from that armament is the sword. Now, a friend of mine gave me this, this gadget from China. It's a sword. That doesn't have a point, because I don't want to, you know, cut anybody. But this sword represents the Word of God. And this is what's the difference in Adventist Christian education. So that means in your photography class, or the multimedia class, or even when it comes to athletics or anything else, God is still the center. The sword is still there. That means in every science class, it's there. In every English class, it's there. In every technology class, it's there. But of course, the best class in the whole school is the Bible class, because it's preparing them not only to live in this world, but the world to come. Now, my next question is to each of you is this. What really is, and we kind of answered it, but I want to give you all a chance. What really is Christian education? What is it? Can somebody define it in a succinct manner to tell us what is Adventist Christian education? So that our audience will understand and know. There's some parents right now watching that are on the river, on the bank, about putting their child into an Adventist school. So we've talked about the sword and everything, but what is Adventist Christian education? Principal, can we start with you?
Sure. Adventist Christian education is education that the foundation is Christ. And I think that's the most important thing, because there are things that you can learn anywhere. But when your foundation is Christ, it makes all the difference. Adventist Christian education infuses the specific messages, prophetic messages, eschatology, Jesus's coming, that keeps our children, hopefully, reminiscent and reminding them of the times in which they live, which also should, and that's what we want to help foster, their purpose for being alive, which is to also help to fulfill the coming of the Lord by the life that they live, by the witnesses that they have, and also providing them with the opportunities to witness about their Christian beliefs and their Adventist beliefs.
All right. Mr. Jordan, would you like to pontificate on that?
And I'm going to piggyback on what she was saying. One of the things that the STOMP program is preparing students to do is to take whatever it is that's inside of them and correlate it to photography and videography. There is a lot of images out there that are not Christian-based or Christian-related, or the person behind the lens did not have that structure of Christian values. So the program can enhance whatever is inside of them to come out to show the outside world what Christianity is about. It's a beautiful thing. And in photography and videography, having that background where it's centered in Christ, there is only one thing that can come about, and that's projecting Christ in everything that they do in their photography and videography. So I think Christian education will enhance whatever it is that they put their hands on.
All right.
So Christian education, Adventist Christian education, and we're not just representing GAAA up here, but BCJA and GAAA. I had the opportunity, before working here, Ms. Cheryl McGee allowed me to come in as a licensed clinical social worker to do what we call teen talk. Our teens, our students, they are of this, they're in this world, but not of this world. So they deal with things too. But the foundation, problem-solving, should be from a biblical perspective, a biblical response, a Christ-centered worldview. And Christian education, Adventist Christian education, we model before our students our beliefs. We model before our students. We believe what we are here for. And I was told that it wasn't a job, it was missionary work. So we are definitely modeling for them. Our response is an Adventist response. And so when they have a problem as the school counselor and they come to me, we are going to look at it from a biblical standpoint. And that is Adventist Christian education at its best, helping them to look at reading, writing, arithmetic, and problem-solving from a Christ-centered, biblical, Adventist viewpoint.
Dr. Shaver, is this a good point to bring in one of our videos that you have ready to set up?
I think it is. So for our watching audience, please watch this brief video. Hi, my name is Dr. Denise Shaver, and I'm the new principal of GAAA. And I want to answer the question, why GAAA? Why? Because it's your school. It's God-centered. Attitude determines altitude. Students will achieve socially, spiritually, and academically. Attainment is the goal, and students will achieve their benchmarks. Come to Greater Atlanta Adventist Academy, where the experience is greater.
All right. I've seen that face before, and you're right in the middle of everything, literally and figuratively. You're in the middle of everything as the new principal. So I'm going to ask you this question, because, you know, as Christians, we're taught that we are the light of the world and that we should be the salt to our communities. What would you say to parents that might say, "Well, I want my child to go, because they're such great Christians, to go to public school so that they can be the salt and the light in their public schools?" What would you say to that versus them coming to the church school?
Well, I would say that there are so many people around the world who don't have access to Christian education, and they can be the light and the salt in those circumstances. I would also say that going to public school is not the only way to be the light and salt. Those students, they play in a neighborhood with them, they go to summer programs with them. And we should be giving our children opportunities to be light and salt wherever they are. So I don't think that using witnessing as a reason to put kids in public school. I also have heard a study that, and this was years ago, I was looking for it to reference it, but they said that seven out of 10 students that attend Adventist schools remain in the church. And three out of 10 who don't attend Adventist schools remain in church. So a different question I would ask is, are your kids remaining in the church important to you?
Okay. Coach, I saw your hand. Would you like to respond?
Yes. Just piggybacking what she said, we're talking about going out and being salt and the light. We also have to remember that at the age that our young people are, they are still impressionable. Okay? So what happens is you will find that when you send them out to be the salt of the earth, they may come back with some pepper and some other spices and seasonings that you did not initially intend. And so by allowing them to, shall I say, simmer in Adventist education and Christian education, again, I'm talking about Christian education, it allows them for, when it is time for them to go out into the world, to do, they are better prepared. And I'm speaking again from some firsthand experiences of students of mine who went to public school or even when they got to college. And then they came back. And that was part of what they were saying, is that you can find anything anywhere you want.
It's true.
But there are certain atmospheres where there's more of it, it's more prevalent. And so they appreciated the ability to have others who had the same thought process, where all striving to do one thing and less pulling at them to do something else that they may not have wanted to do and came out best for them. So another thing is it's just more, the more you have someone's best interest and the more people you have around you, the better, shall I say, the better it is for our young people. And there's a, there will come a time when they'll be able to make their stands and go out in the world and preach the gospel and all those other things.
With all the tools that they need, wherever they are. Okay, yes.
I'd like to add to that, just to piggyback on what John was saying. When you're baking a cake, it takes time. And you don't want to take the cake out of the oven before you bake it. And you don't want to take the cake out of the oven before it's time. And Adventist Christian education allows the student that time to bake.
Well, I'm going to jump on this cooking thing because, you know, my mother-in-law makes the best pound cake. And she's not a selfish cook. She will write out for you her pound cake recipe and give it to you. And then she's told me that her friends always come back and say, "Mabel, it doesn't taste the same." And you know what's the difference? It's little things. You're supposed to take your eggs out and let them become room temperature. You're supposed to take your butter out and let it become room temperature. You don't just get up in the morning and start baking a cake. You have to prepare. And the same thing, I remember at Oakwood, I would hear Elder Ward say, "The way you prepare for the Sabbath is the way that you are preparing for the second coming of Jesus Christ." And that has stuck with me all these many years. Every time I'm getting ready for the Sabbath, I think about it. And you see, this is the importance of Adventist education because Jesus is woven in every part of that fabric, from basketball, volleyball, whatever else we may do, photography, whatever we do, choir, it's all about Jesus. Now, Dr. Willis, I'm about to, I'm about to put you on the spot right quick because I know that you can answer this question. You are a product of public education, and you turned out well. So why can't, why do you keep your kids in the church school?
I was going to answer that, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I went to public high school, school all my life, even HBCU that was not Oakwood. And I wish, that's my biggest regret, I wish I would have went to Oakwood. So when I was there, I was just as active, and it was a battle. It was a battle. And I made a promise to God that if He blessed me with children, they will not have to deal with the internal convictions that I had to deal with. It may be something else, but it would not be the Sabbath. It would not be, you know, trampling upon God Sabbath day. So God has been faithful to allow me to have my children from birth to present to be in Adventist education. And it was just a, it was just, just a conviction that God placed upon me. So I thank Him for being faithful and allowing me to keep my children in Adventist Christian education.
Okay, Dr. Shaver, I think you have a question you'd like to ask my audience?
I do. It's a very important question, and it's one that I've heard a lot. Someone says that they have a child with autism, and they have been looking for an Adventist school that's inclusive for all students with developmental challenges. And this is a real challenge for Adventist school, and I'm not going to pretend that it's not. And we have not always addressed it the way that we have. And we were talking about this at length yesterday. So GAAA will accept students with mild disabilities, mild to moderate. And so if they are autistic, it depends on what side, what range of the spectrum of autism. But we are working towards, we do have someone, a consultant that worked with us last year, and hopefully will be working with us this year to help those who have IEPs and that have mild to moderate and low moderate disabilities. So my response would be to come in, let us talk, let's see the IEP, and let's see how we can integrate. Because we don't want any of our children left behind. We don't want any of them to have to, have to, if they want to, be in our system. But we want to be also honest to the systems and the processes and the supports that we have to accommodate you. So please come in and talk to us, and we will see what we can do. Thank you so much for your question.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, and I have a son that's on the spectrum. And one of the things that I know that with the STOMP program, it's all-inclusive. And those who are on the spectrum, autism spectrum, it varies. They can be precise in certain things, and they have talent in other things. So there's, there's something there that a program, an art program like STOMP or videography or photography can also tap into someone who is on the spectrum of autism.
And we're also going to have, in addition to Ms. Jordan's program, an art program, after-school program as well, for people who may not, may not have the time in their schedule in the class, but they like to do that, and we're going to be having choir as well. So those all-enriching types of programs that will make a student well-rounded is what we're going to have.
All right. If I, if a, if a parent were to ask our panelist, "If I put my child into GAAA or BCJA, am I sheltering them from the real world? Shouldn't they be in a public school setting so they'll understand how the real world works? Why do I want to shelter them?"
Let me answer that. I was told that if you want to know the counterfeit of a dollar bill, you need to study the dollar bill, not the counterfeit. So you do not have to touch fire to know that it burns. So you don't have to go through trials and tribulations or go through things to say, "Hey, I'm ready." God has told us everything in His word, what we are going to come about. We're going to have afflictions. We're going to have tribulations. We're going to suffer. But why not suffer walking with the Lord in His school? So that, I'm a big proponent of you do not have to experience something just to say that you are prepared.
All right, anybody else?
Amen.
Okay, you better preach. Amen. You better preach on that one, okay? Well, keeping in tune with that, let me ask this about the real world that we live in. Is that complex from BCDC to GAAA, BCJA in the middle, is it a safe environment? What are we doing to make sure that the school facility is safe?
It's definitely a safe environment. All of the doors are securely locked at all times. So you can't just walk in and just come in. We have a wonderful reception and Ms. Lee at the door to receive and to monitor and see where the students should be. We have information in regards to who should pick up our students, emergency contact information, so that no one could just come up and pick up our students. So it's a very safe, secure environment.
Thank you. And I want to add that we also have security on grounds at all times, from the time we open to the time we close. And we have also developed very stringent protocols for COVID. And we are, GAAA is also going to have the same thermometer that scans you as BCJ already has. We will be checking thermometers. We're also going to buy GAAA water bottles for all of our students so that they keep them in their lockers to reduce the chances of them, we know how sometimes young people just put their mouth all the way down to the water fountain. We want to, so that, and we're going to be issuing GAAA masks. So we have the COVID protocols as well to also help with the security. And I want to encourage, we sent out that to the parents. We're going to be sending it out again. We're also doing something, again, that you cannot find at a public school. We're infusing intentionally the eight laws of health this year. Now more than ever, we're going to encourage our children to drink more water. We're going to try to get them out more to have sunshine and the fresh air. And to, we have a spiritual emphasis in the middle of the day where they stop and they pray, right? So that we foster that trust in God. We're not just going to let them learn it. We're going to make them practice it this year in everything. So, yes.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that because makes, well, no, it doesn't make me want to have another child. Now, I don't want to get that straight. But I'm glad that my son went through that and that GAAA is keeping up with the times because we want our school to be a little slice of heaven, where angels like to come and hang out. And that's the important thing. Now, Dr. Willis, what about bullying? Do we allow our kids to bully one another or, you know, what's, you know, because the devil was in heaven?
Yes. The whole complex from BCDC, BCJA, GAAA is a no-bully zone. So that is just not tolerated at all on our campus. We want to be like Christ. We want to be inclusive. We want to be nurturing, compassionate, and not just us, our students are. I am very pleased to say that GAAA, BCJA, they have a group of students that is inclusive. When a new student comes, they feel at home. We had a new student last year, a year before last came, and she was a junior. And she said, "I've never experienced this." I said, "What is it? How's your new, how are you doing?" And she said, "It's just like I've been their friends for life." And they started out right away. And I can tell you that after one student after another, they feel very inclusive in coming on our complex, not just GAAA, but BCJ as well.
And I want to say very, very clearly to, because I'm new to the community, and I am a mother, and I have three children. And I had an experience at an Adventist school where my child, it wasn't bullying, but some of those other soft ways that we exclude people and don't make them feel welcome. And I watched my daughter, my oldest daughter shrink, her personality start to change because she was not included, because she came in the middle of the year and nobody knew her. And I transferred her. And I'm telling you, parents, if you tell me that your child is being bullied or excluded, I will deal with it. GAAA will deal with it. And if we hear and we can, and if I can help foster it on any of our schools, we will deal with it because I know firsthand what it feels like as a parent. I know how powerless you feel to protect your children from those types of attacks. And I don't want that to be said of our schools because I want the opposite to be said, exactly what you said, that this is a safe place, that it's a welcoming place, that's an inclusive place. And so if we see any of that, we're going to deal with that. But we're going to deal it also from a student-centered perspective, making students take ownership of the caliber and the environment that they want to create in their school. So we're going to help them, bring them on and help them do that.
And also, a lot of people talk about the bully and the person, the victim that's being bullied, and then the bystander. But there's another person, there's another part of that. We are going to have upstanders. Those are the ones who are willing to stand up at GAAA and say, at BCJ and say, "Hey, that's not right. That's not what we do here." So we are creating leaders as, we are creating leaders as well as upstanders, those who will be willing to stand up and say, "We're not going to tolerate that, and I'm not going to laugh at that."
All right.
And with leaders, you will be happy to know that the last several USM presidents, United Student Movement at Oakwood, were graduates of GAAA. They love to say that, right? And it's, and it's true.
Amen.
So not just talk, we have the results to prove it.
Amen.
All right, Dr. Shaver, is this a good time for the second video?
I think so. So let's go ahead and watch the video. And I know the person on there looks familiar. Just ignore the person and listen to the message. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Denise Shaver, and I am proud to announce that I'm the new principal at Greater Atlanta Adventist Academy, GAAA, serving grades nine to 12. Thank you, Atlanta, for making me feel welcome. I was raised in New York, and I must admit, Atlanta reminds me of New York. Atlanta is metropolitan, alive, full of resources, culture, and institutions of academic excellence like GAAA. If you're a resident of Atlanta and you don't know much about our school or you need a reminder, I'd like to fill you in on a few things that attracted me to this opportunity to serve. GAAA is a Middle States-accredited institution that shares a beautiful campus with our sister academy, the Bereen Christian Junior Academy, the first African-American private school in the city of Atlanta. At GAAA, we weathered the storm of coronavirus that forced parents, teachers, and stakeholders nationwide to grapple with a new normal. As a result, many students in the city of Atlanta suffered academically in the absence of in-person instruction. Our children were also strained emotionally due to a lack of social interaction with their peers. Reconnecting and getting our children back on track is critical at GAAA, and we plan to accomplish these goals in the following ways: implementing a targeted curriculum that focuses on emotional, physical, mental, and spiritual development; providing a safe, nurturing, and Christian environment under COVID standards; maintaining a small student-teacher ratio; and actively engaging with the community through service. We welcome you to the 2021-2022 school year. I am Dr. Denise Shaver, and I am GAAA.
To learn more about the Greater Atlanta Adventist Academy, please visit gaaaschool.org or call 404-799-0337.
To Greater Atlanta Adventist Academy, where the experience is greater.
Wow, Dr. Shaver, you're everywhere. You're just all in it, in and out, all the videos. I can't wait to grow up. I want to be like you one day.
Yes, that's the last one. All the other videos are going to be of you all, okay?
Well, I think there's a question for you that's from our audience that I would like for you to handle right now.
I actually have two. One is a very excellent question, and thank you for bringing that up. It says, "Why have a town hall meeting on the Sabbath? It seems like this would be more appropriate on Sunday." And I'm glad, it was quite intentional because when we have our meetings on Sunday, we're only going to get our parents probably who are actively in the pipeline, who are our actual parents and maybe some perspective. We wanted to talk to the whole community, to the church, right? Because the church is the support of all of our schools. You have the children, and you have the questions. And so I wanted to do it on the Sabbath so that we would have the opportunity to get the voice in the ear of the church community. And so that was actually intentional.
Plus, this is a, this is a great day because it's almost as if we're having an Adventist Christian education day. And we're talking about the goodness of the Lord and what His school is all about. We're not talking about what the team did or any of the secular point of view. We're talking about God's ideal for His children's children. And that's why it's one of the best times to talk about it, to talk about it on the Sabbath. Now, I know you've got another question that you want to ask or has been asked of us that you have.
It is. It's kind of related to what we already talked about. And I think that Coach Damon will also help with this because he gave me a great example of how he changes his athletes in terms of their ability to act like Christians. So the question or the comment is, is it difficult to determine who the bully is and where the bullying is coming from? And I imagine sometimes it is because students don't like to tell on each other, right? What snitches get what? Okay, so we, you know, and so we don't want, we know that sometimes the students won't tell, right? Because there's, and they're also scared of getting bullied more or maybe just being ignored. And so that's why it's so important for the whole environment and atmosphere to be different. It's not just not bullying. It is that we are fostering young people who are Christ-centered. That will eliminate- That will eliminate bullying, right? We're going to promote that you think about others before you think about yourself. We're going to promote that we should act like Jesus, not, not just pretend, but really emulate him. And so these types of transformative experiences that we're going to be intentional this year is to actually change the students individually internally so that we don't have those outgrowths of bullying. But do you remember what you were telling me about how the student, how you take your girls around and go to the, why don't you share that? Because this is some of the things that we want to do this year to help change our students.
We're just talking about cultural changes. And a lot of times when you think of athleticism, you think about rivals and so on and so forth. In Christian education, people are scared of competition and scared of the things that it brings and so on and so forth. So I was just sharing with Dr. Shaver that in our, my particular experience, one of the things that we do is, how should I say it? We encourage relationship building. And so when you have a relationship with someone, it's hard for someone to bully you who knows you, who cares about you, and so on and so forth. And it's the same thing when we're talking about, we were talking about athletics and sports. When you have a rival, so to speak, like say if you're in a league, those of you are aware of how basketball work. If we're saying that we're talking about the Lakers and the Celtics, just so we go to a rivalry that may be known. Pretty much what happens, Lakers get on the bus, they travel to Boston, they play the game. If they won, they run in their locker room, they celebrate, they leave. If they lose, they go to their locker room and the coach gives a speech and they leave. That's not what we want to kind of foster, is what I'm saying. It's not what we do or what I, we, how should I say, Lakers have been associated with the past. We encourage you to build with the other team. Meaning in our league, we were one, the other team was two. Sometimes they were one and sometimes we were two. However, when our games were over, we would go to some of their games. And we would sit in the things and wear their colors. And people would think that was strange. What are you guys trying to do? Well, they found out that that wasn't it. We had, our kids were friends with their kids. And we became friends with other kids because that's what we fostered. When our team came and played one time and our kids came and sat in the bleachers with them, the parents came over and was like, hey, what's going on? They're thinking about bullying. Are you trying to intimidate us? Because no, they're trying to get to know them. Because even though our boys are playing now, and we're going to cheer for our guys who cheer for our girls, but we're, you know, we're cheering for the sport in and of itself. So again, relationships, like in communities and otherwise, is what determines a lot of things. So one of the key things that we want to do is teach our kids to build relationships that are inclusive.
Is it only going to be basketball this year?
Okay.
When we talk about.
How shall I say? I am a all-sport person. Meaning basketball, of course, is a, is a passion of mine. However, I, it's important to me that all people have the opportunity to use their skills. And so you will find kids that don't like basketball, but they love volleyball. You will find kids that don't love either, but they want to run. So we want to encourage them to be able to run. And so what we are building at this time and going forward is a program that will offer something every season. If you don't know, athletic seasons go fall, winter, spring and summer. And so we are going to be offering things to take our kids through all of those seasons. Not just the winter season, which is, I'm sure maybe one of the most popular seasons. But we are encouraging all seasons, just like some of us like fall, some of us like spring. You know, some can take the heat of summer and so on and so forth. So it's the same thing when you're, when you're developing young people. They like all different types. So we want to make sure we offer and foster and push them to enjoy all, all types of weather.
That, that sounds like the Adventist philosophy of the whole person, right? Doesn't it?
Yes.
I want to, I want to just go back a little bit and just two points and two unrelated points. But in regards to why today, why on the Sabbath day, this is a ministry. Believe me, this is a ministry. We know that when we get paid, this is a ministry. So, but also, so when we are in the building, we're ministers. We're ministers. So having this on the Sabbath day, letting you know that this educational evangelistic ministry is being promoted on God's Sabbath day. Because this is for our students. And many of them, I long for the day that when they come back, they will say, because of something you did at BCJA. Because of something we introduced them to at G AAA has got, that was a part of that star in our crown. So we look forward to that day. But I want to go back to Dr. Shaver about the bullying and how we know. I want to say that we are present, we are observant. And because this is a Christian school, we can also say this, we have the spirit of discernment. Some people have that gift. But we are watchful and vigilant. And so when we're talking about, we're talking to our students and we're dealing with some of their behaviors. We may not say that they are a bully, but we see some behaviors and character that could use some building up. So we definitely are observant and we are mindful of what's going on in our students. And so we're just being watchful. And so we're not looking for a bully, but we're looking for what are some behaviors that could be, that could use some improvements so that you'll be a better Christian for Christ.
Amen.
Just real thing, based on what she was saying, when we're talking about the Sabbath and stuff, we often have discussions on the Sabbath about witnessing and so on and so forth. So part of what, when we're having this conversation, we're talking about the things we're trying to infuse into our kids to change their lives and others. And I'm just getting a real quick story is that my wife and I were having dinner one time in a, how should I say, a more quote unquote elite neighborhood, maybe like Whitney Houston's house was on the corner. And we were having some friends there. So you know, this is far from, this is far from South Central LA, if you, if you know what that is. But while we're having dinner, someone came and spoke. And we were just having a conversation. They said, you know, there is a school that my son went to in South Central to play a game. And we play other schools all the time. And we went to this school in South Central and we played this game. And my son, after the game, they lost. And they were expecting to win because they were the higher ranked schools, the playoff game. He said, but what he kept talking about to me in the car were the kids and the people at the school, how much fun he had playing the game, how much fun he had interacting and the conversations that he was able to have with the other team members after the game. And that's what we're talking about fostering the atmosphere. And she was just saying, that little school made a difference in what my son saw as far as athletics was concerned. He said, because he always hears Christian, he said, but that was in his four years, he was a senior. In his four years of playing, that was the first time he went somewhere and he could say, that place was Christian and that was a whole different experience. And so that conversation is a conversation that this lady, who happened to be Caucasian, was having with an African-American worker at work. And the African-American worker was just handling it with us. And it just so happens that the school that she was talking about was one of our Christian Adventist schools.
Amen.
And so what I'm saying is you never know, because I didn't know I was going to be out there. And that person didn't know who they were talking, whatever, meet somebody from that. But what I'm saying is, so it gets around, so the things that you do are going to come out. And so when you're fostering that, you want to talk about it and let other people talk about it. So we're talking about now while we're sitting around the dinner table, so to speak, or after your dinner table. Some of us, you know, have lounging afterwards. But we're, we're here to keep this in your forefront. Because it's going to be something that we think is going to be wholesome and benefit to you and your family and your environment.
Amen.
Amen. I want, I want to ask the audience to please, if you have any more questions, to text it in either the Zoom link in the chat or the YouTube chat so that we can get those questions. I'm checking my phone. I'm not ignoring anyone. I'm, I'm just making sure that I can see them if they come up. So thank you.
Dr. Shaver, we're coming to, towards the end of our discussion today. But I need you to talk about the curriculum at G AAA because I think there's some exciting things that are taking place for this upcoming school year. So if you wouldn't mind just giving us your vision and how are we getting ready to move forward academically, spiritually and physically the next school year?
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to start to answer that and then you know where I'm going, right? After that, our registrar, that's what she does all day long. So I'm really happy, and she'll be probably expound on this. We have worked really hard, she has worked really hard, and our vice principals, to revise somewhat our curriculum to make it more student-centered and student-friendly. So that, I'm really happy about that. We have some reductions. We'll talk about some of the things that we've done. But we have a very strong college preparatory curriculum, right? And it's, and we, we also have a standard curriculum for those who, and we have to be honest. Everybody is not going to college. Everybody is not designed to go to college, and that is not a bad thing. That's a good thing. I am working on, and I don't want to announce it, I won't say definitively, a program, a vocational track program, right? This won't be a curriculum, but it'll be, it'll provide students with access to other alternatives for those who aren't going to college. And some of them get paid very well, right?
Amen.
And some of us that went to college don't.
Yes, he is one.
We want, we want, we want all of our children to realize that they all have a purpose and it doesn't have to look the same. So that's one of the things that we've done is, and I'll let Dr. Willis talk about it. But the other things that we're doing with the curriculum or the co-curricular program is offering like the photography option after school and art after school. We'll have art in school and a full art and photography, digital media program after school. And to bring on an AD director who's going to hopefully enhance, who's going to give us more, more options. And, and we love our previous AD director and he'll still be working with us. So, so that it's no disrespect to anyone before. And he still will be working with the young people. So, but to have that more well-rounded co-curricular as well as curricular program. But I'm going to defer to Dr. Willis to talk more about the curriculum.
So we're going to talk about the schedule. We have some changes and we sent it out and the students and parents received that. And we're looking at the student and as you were saying, their term whole student. Making sure that it's a reasonable time that they are to be there. And that those classes and the times of those classes are conducive to the optimal level of learning. So we are looking at that. We have some embedded breaks and definitely spiritual emphasis, Ms. Reed, is an embedded praise break in there. And so with that, we have some really wonderful and great spiritually, spiritual programs. And also looking at the ending of school, you know, and that it's not, you know, too, too late. But also that the whole day and the curriculum and the classes are not so burdensome. So what we did was with Dr. Shaver's approval, we went and looked at the NAD, the Southern Union graduation requirements. We looked at public school to our school requirements and kind of got more aligned with that. So that's what we're looking at. And I think that it is definitely student-friendly and is dealing with the whole student. And so we will have a, a great student and their, their work will, will show.
All right. You know, one of the last questions that I had is looking at the school system from a secular view to a biblical view. And I, I don't know, do you have any more questions that have come from the audience at this time?
I have not yet. I'm waiting to see. I know they're coming, but.
And I want to, I want to kind of end with the worldview or a secular view with a biblical view. And if anybody on this panel would like to just discuss the differences between a secular view, a worldview, and a biblical worldview. And see, this is the crux of why Adventist Christian education is so important.
Well, one of the things that is taught in our schools, I believe, is that we have, they have, I believe, I don't, I'm not sure what the curriculum is right now. By the time as I came through matriculated, they teach a worldview versus.
We do. We still do.
The biblical view of school. And so part of what that is, is just understanding the differences and what the emphasis is. And aligning yourself with the, with the goals and things that are, how should I say? Important to eternal life, not just important to this life. And so a lot of times, that is where you differ with secular. The information that they give you with your character building, the information that they're giving you with your finances is everything to build you a life here. And you have, you have success here. But what we're doing when we're talking about the, we are building you for success here, but also eternally. We're also building you so that you help other people to become successful here. Because a lot of times you'll find in the world that the success is about you. And for a Christian to have success, it should almost never be about you.
Amen.
It's about others and the service and helping them get to where they can prosper and where they have success. And so that's basically where I come from when I, when I talk to students and they want to know the difference. I'm talking about a secular world is that, you know, a lot of times it's me, what I can do and how I'm going to help somebody and how much money I can make. And what we're trying to get people to understand is, is about what the services and skills that you have, what will they provide for someone else? How will they help someone else in this life make it to their full potential?
I want to go back to curriculum, just if I could. I also wanted to talk about two other new things, Dr. Shaver, and you can definitely chime in. But the satellite schools. This is the first time, drum roll please, that G AAA will have satellite schools. We have one in Augusta. And so that means that we will have a G AAA site in Augusta where they will have distant learning with our school piping into our classes, coming, getting the same elite and wonderful experience as it is G AAA, where the experience is greater. They will be a part of that. And we've been talking with Ms. Hartnik, I have been, and I'm excited, she's excited. And we both said, this is a long time coming. And so G AAA is expanding. And so that our sister schools who are away now can have distant learning with us. Also, I want to talk about that Oakwood now will be doing dual enrollment with G AAA. Yay! Oakwood will be doing dual enrollment. They can take 12 credits at no cost, as long as that they will attend Oakwood for a full year. So they can take 12 credits and they can take this from 10. And with 10, we will definitely make sure that they're focused, 10, 11 and 12th grade. So they could potentially come in and go into Oakwood as a sophomore. And so, or with an associate's degree.
So just, they can take up to 30 credits.
Right, right, right.
They can take, and, and they are free because they will replace their dual credits. So they will also serve as a college, as a college course as well as the curriculum requirement for high school. And they will be able to maximize that if they go to Oakwood for a year and they don't have to pay for those. If they don't go to Oakwood, which we're all, I think, Oakwoodite, so shameless plug. Because it is Adventist education, right?
Okay.
Yes.
And HBCU, okay, shameless plug. They will be, they, they'll just have to pay for those credits if they don't go to Oakwood. I mean, and you have to pay to go to college, right? But why not maximize getting those? We also work, still work with Georgia schools as well. So we're not biased.
They have choices.
Well, we are, we are biased, but we, they have. Well, we are biased, but they have choices and options. So they can still take the dual enrollment through the Georgia public, I mean, Georgia University schools as well. I'm telling you, Pam, we're going to really be pushing this because I'm a parent and I have two right now in college, right? You have one, do you have any? You have one? They're done?
Done. This is the done end.
This is the done end.
This is the done end.
And this is the struggling end, right? Okay.
We're done.
Struggling end. Okay. We want to encourage you to get as many free college credits as you can. And what we're going to be doing this year also with the curriculum is, all those study halls, we're going to be pushing them to be taking those classes and using the time. And we are also going to be doing some other things to help them with their ACT scores and everything. So we really have made it so that we can see the results this year, right? We have a strategic plan and we want to see a five-year plan. But this year, if we can see growth this year, that will be tremendous. So...
Amen. Well, you know, I know we're coming, quickly coming to the conclusion of our discussion this afternoon. And I don't think you have any more responses from our listening view?
Well, I did get one.
Let me see.
And well, it's saying that they didn't get any communication. So please, I just said, if you have...
We are sorry.
And if you're not here, then please email us, text us, put it in the chat. We will get you that information. Also, before we close, tomorrow, tomorrow everyone, we're having a big back-to-school bash for our early learning center, our elementary school, and our high school. So the whole compound will be out tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:00 to help you register, to answer questions, to do anything we can to help facilitate you coming to our school, having a phenomenal experience right from the very beginning. And we want to hear from you. If you have any challenges, we want to hear that as well so we can try to help you through it.
All right. I, you know, the last question was...
Yes, sir?
I didn't have, I just, since we, some of us are doing shameless plugs. I am also a girl's dad. So I just need that to be said so that we understand that when you come to GAAA and you have a young lady that's there, she will be considered an athlete, just like anyone else. And we will encourage and push them, as we will any other athlete.
Worth plug.
That's a great plug.
That's what I'm talking about. That's why you got Kobe on your mask. All right, all right. I just want to say that the important part about Adventist Christian education is the cross. Because Jesus died for us. We're talking about the Ten Commandments. This is not a set of rules, but it is a way to govern your life, to get from this world to the next. And I want to just read something to you that I found out, the differences between secular worldview and a biblical worldview. The secular world says, life is a business transaction. The Bible says, life is a mission. The world says, what do I get? The Bible says, how can I help? The world says emphasis on competition. The world said, the Bible says emphasis on service. The world says we celebrate independence, sexuality, and protecting your rights. But the Bible says we celebrate kindness, modesty, respect, and the sanctity of life. The world says we are motivated by personal gain. The Bible says we're motivated by advancing the kingdom of God. The world says fulfill your dreams. The Bible says fulfill your calling. The world says live for yourself. The Bible says lose your life, then you will find it. The world says motivate to do one's best by fear or failure or rejection. The Bible says you're motivated to do one's best by gratitude to God. The world said truth is relative, you decide. The Bible says truth is absolute, you pursue it. The world says take correction personally, indefensive, and be defensive. The Bible says realize we can learn from loving correction. The world says compare yourself to others. The Bible says compare yourself to the standard that God has revealed. The world says you are what people say about you. The Bible says identify, identify yourself with what comes from what God says about you. The world says nothing is eternal and everything is transcended. The Bible says, the world is ordered and upheld by a loving God and that the word of God and the souls of men are eternal when you make Jesus your calling and election sure.
Amen.
As knights, GAAA, squires, BCJA, and I don't know what BCDC is, but they're all in that great kingdom. It's all about Jesus. Only what you do for Christ will last. When all things are ended, my God is not going to ask me, and I'm talking about my son now, Jeremy, what his ACT score was.
Amen.
He's going to ask, is his name in the book of life? And because we're on the done end, I'm just praying that his training will hold and that he will choose Christ because we've given all the tools that they need to make heaven their home. We're almost home, you all. We're almost there. Put your investment in your children. And I'm going to say this as a disclaimer. The school is not perfect, but God is.
Amen.
And that when things go wrong at the school, you tell our ultimate employer, which is Jesus Christ himself, and he will handle the business. Make wise choices and decisions and choose Jesus. Because I tell you right now, when my son makes mistakes, I sleep well at night because I've done all I can. And I keep him on the altar. It's all about Jesus. Principal, I would like you to have the last word and then close with prayer.
Thank you so much. I don't know that I can have a word past that. I think that was, that was the word. I want to just say that really, we are living in the last days. I believe that. I don't know if any of you do, but I truly believe that. And I think that all of the barriers that we can put to protect our children around, it's more important now, more than ever, that we protect and surround them and infuse and promote God, Jesus, Christianity. It's now more than ever. And so I want to encourage you. I know there are a million reasons and we're parents, we're all parents here. So we know the million reasons, good and bad, honestly, that you can have to not support Christian education. But as someone says, it doesn't cost, which we know it does, but it definitely does pay. It definitely does pay. And sometimes that payment is deferred. And I will give my own really, really quick testimony. My mother would always say to me at Oakwood, I'm not going to, just what you said, I don't lose sleep at night about you because I know I've done everything you can do. And she used to, go to church, go to church, go to church. And I said, mommy, God doesn't, I don't have to go to church for the Lord to talk to me. And that was my excuse, right? But you know what? The Lord did talk to me and I ended up working for the church and have been doing it ever since. And it's because that was normal for me, right? It was because I knew that this was a place where people poured into me and I owed it to pour back into the next generation. So we are not perfect. But we promise that we're going to do our best for your children, just like we do want somebody else to do the best for ours.
Amen.
All right.
Amen.
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you unperfect, but we come to a perfect God. We thank you for your holiness, we thank you for your righteousness. We thank you that you impute that righteousness upon us because we are unworthy and incapable of it. We ask that you be with every parent, every guardian, every sponsor that might be listening right now. Touch their hearts, Lord. We pray for every student that is represented, for those who are listening and those who might listen later. Lord, we ask that your Holy Spirit will touch them and impress them with the right thing to do, not just for our schools, but for the life and the salvation of their family, Lord. Save us all, unworthy as we are, a place in your kingdom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.